All this meeting to order, it is 6:30 and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
It stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty-
for all. Okay, thank you for coming, everyone. I will now turn things over to the superintendent for the celebration of excellence.
Good evening, everybody. It is my, this is a, an exciting and a tough night always in June. So we're going to start by honoring our student rep Emily Tenunzio. So Emma spent the last two years serving as a student rep for the Board of Ed. Over the years, she has involved herself in many aspects of Bolton High School, from participating in the concert band as a flutist to becoming a member of the National Honor Society. She's also participated in various clubs during her school career, including the Donut Club, much-loved club of Bolton High School, the Latin Club, the Art Club, and the Book Club. She served as captain of both the varsity women's cross-country and basketball teams, as well as participating in the track team. Emily has devoted many, many hours of service to Bolton High School and to the Bolton community. From Special Olympics torch run to Bolton Summer Race Series, her dedication to her community will serve her well as she prepares to enter the elite six-year Physicians Assistant Program at Springfield College, a program that is renowned for its unique blend of academic rigor and hands-on experience. Emily, it has been a pleasure to work with you these last two years, and I wish you much success in college and in the future. Would you like to say anything, Em?
Just thank you for this opportunity.
It's been great. You've done a wonderful job. Congratulations. And it's looking like graduation is going to be a beautiful night.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now to honor our Bolton retirees. So first, I'd like to start with Terry Decormier. Terry, could you wave so everybody can see you? I can see you, but there we go. Thank you. Terry has been a dedicated and caring support staff member at Bolton Center School for 21 years. Her deep commitment to the well-being of students is evident in her interactions every day. She's provided support for many diverse needs and was always willing to learn new programs or technology to effectively support her students. Terry could often be seen at concerts or other evening events to lend a hand if needed, but more importantly, so she could see the success of her students. She delighted in the aha moments she witnessed and was eager to share. As a team member, she was always willing to step in and help, anticipating needs and providing input to be proactive. Never one for recognition, there is also a side of Terry that many people do not know. She's been a dedicated student mentor for many years. She has gone above and beyond volunteering countless hours of her time to support academics and extracurricular activities. She truly has made a difference in the lives of students that she has touched, and I am sure they will remember her well beyond their time in Bolton. Finally, heartfelt congratulations to Terry, who recently became a grandmother for the first time to beautiful baby girl Rose. Terry will be missed by the students and all her friends here in the Bolton Public Schools. Terry, we wish you much health and happiness in your retirement. Congratulations. Terry, would you like to say anything?
Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure being part of the school since 1994, with my daughters being enrolled in the school and going through the school system with them and working in the school. I work with fantastic staff and great students, and I'll miss everyone.
We will miss you. Congratulations, Terry.
Thank you.
Next on to Peter Mora. Pete, I think I saw you with us tonight, didn't I? If you could give everyone a wave. So Mr. Peter Mora joined the Bolton Public Schools in 1992. He's worked tirelessly each day to keep Bolton High School clean and shiny. Each year, many visitors, often vendors that work in dozens of schools around the state, comment on how clean and bright Bolton High School always is. They all state that Bolton High School is the cleanest high school they have ever seen. Pete's work has gone well beyond keeping the hallways and the bathrooms clean. Our fields and grounds have truly benefited from his dedication and incredible work ethic. Pete has been a part of the team at VHS through multiple renovations, including the large addition renovation 12 years ago. Peter's been a longstanding member of the Bolton Public Schools District Safety Team as well. His background as a firefighter, medical responder, and assistant fire chief brought an important perspective to the safety committee, and his work there will be greatly missed. Throughout his 29 years at Bolton High School, Peter Mora has always prioritized the health and safety of all students and staff. He's been a mentor, a friend, a strong supporter of students and staff, and truly will be missed. I, from a personal note, am also going to miss Pete very much. We have spent time together over the years in various situations, and I'm just going to miss him so much. Pete, we wish you much health and happiness in your retirement. Congratulations. Pete, are you on? Would you like to say anything?
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
All right, I want, again, I'd like to thank you and the board for the parting gifts that were given to me back again. I also thank Christine for that wonderful speech you just gave. I didn't get a tissue here, but it was pretty good. I also want to make, comfort you a little bit that I planted the tomatoes, and I should be paying you a visit sometime in August and make sure you got the bread and mayo ready.
I will, Pete. Thank you very much. Just so everybody knows, Pete grows the most delicious tomatoes I have ever had in my whole life, and they make a wonderful tomato salad. So I appreciate that, Pete. I'll be looking forward to seeing you. Next, I'd like to honor Leanne Manning. So Leanne has been working in Student Support Services Department in Bolton for 12 years. She's supported staff, parents, and students when they call, asking a question, or looking for information. Leanne takes care of the needs of the staff in our department and anticipates many needs before the rest of the special ed department even knows the need exists. Her understanding of special education and her experience will be missed by many. Leanne enjoys being part of a team and is always willing to help with a task or a problem to solve, to come up with a solution. She does not shy away from taking on challenges, as is evidenced by her most recent undertaking of the migration from our current IEP system to the new state system. She's attended weekly meetings and ensures we're all doing the tasks the state asks us to do. Because of her efforts, we have been on time for all timelines and are in a good position for moving forward with this huge change. Many of you may not know this, but Leanne is the person behind the scenes who always makes sure Central Office is properly decorated for this season or a special occasion. She is also the one to remind the rest of us about an upcoming birthday of a colleague here. I'm sorry. Her creativity and gentle reminders will be missed. We wish Leanne the very best as she enters the next chapter of her life, and wish her health, happiness, and lots of quality time with her family. We thank her for her many years of service and her dedication to the students and staff in Bolton. Leanne wasn't able to be with us tonight, but I think to give her a round of applause and offer our heartfelt congratulations. Next, Ms. Carol Franco. Carol Franco began at Bolton Center School 24 years ago. Prior to coming to the district, Carol received her master's from Cambridge University in England, and then had a remarkable career working as a lady mayoress for Westminster in London, England. Her duties included accompanying the Lord Mayor to hundreds of engagements, whether it was Buckingham Palace or around the world. Her experience with international relations and world cultures was a gift to Bolton Center School as she was the catalyst behind the creation and implementation of the World Language Program. Carol's passion for teaching world language is rooted in her passion for traveling the world. Name a country, no matter how exotic or remote it may sound, and Carol has likely traveled there and learned from the culture and its people. Her enthusiasm for teaching the culture of Spanish and French-speaking countries to her students came from this firsthand experience. No matter what changes and challenges a new school year brought, and we all know how challenging the last few years have been, Carol always handled it with grace and adaptability. She always puts the needs of her students at the forefront. Yes, Carol taught both French and Spanish to the countless students at Bolton Center School, but she also instilled in her students the importance of being respectful and having good work habits. Carol understood such qualities in her students were equally as important as their ability to speak a foreign language, if not more so. How lucky Bolton, its students, its staff, and its community have been to have had Carol Franco be part of our world. She has left an indelible mark, and her legacy of the Bolton Center School World Language Program will continue on. Carol, I wish you much health and happiness and lots of fun travels in your retirement. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, first of all, thank you for those wonderful, kind words. They meant a lot to me. And also, I've said that it takes a village to raise a child, but I also think it takes a village to produce a teacher. So I'm grateful to the board for support. I'm grateful to Kristin for keeping us safe, along with all her other duties. I'm grateful to my administration for making it possible to do our jobs, especially Darryl, who has an incredible job running a K-8 school, to our custodians, to the nursing staff, to the psych team. I hope I haven't left anybody out, and to all the colleagues that I worked with and shared experiences. At least I leave with wonderful friendships and very special memories. So thank you all from the bottom of my heart, and I will always remember you. I live in Bolton after all.
Thank you, Carol. Girl, you make sure you send us postcards from all those wonderful trips I know you're going to take. I can't wait to see where you go next. Next, I would like to honor Nancy Mazikowski, our Payroll and Benefits Coordinator. Like to congratulate her on her retirement. She began her tenure, our Payroll and Benefits Coordinator, back in May of 2000. Nancy has been an indispensable member of the Bolton Public School System over the last 22 years and has built many close relationships with staff and even their families. I've known Nancy personally for 30 years, and she's always been a detail-oriented problem solver who can meet demanding deadlines. She has worked tirelessly and reliably these past 22 years to ensure that we are all paid on time and it's accurate. Many people may not know this, but Nancy is quite a prankster with quite a sense of humor. It has been an absolute pleasure working with Nancy during our time together in Bolton. She's always available to answer all our staff's questions and will go the extra mile to research any issues that may arise. Her hard work and dedication have greatly benefited our school system, and we will miss her very much. While we are saddened to see her go, we are at the same time very happy for her. After years of hard work and dedicated faithful service, Nancy, we hope your retirement is filled with many blessings. We wish you all the best as you start this next chapter of your life, enjoying more time with your family and friends and time out on your boat. Best wishes for a healthy and happy retirement. If you don't believe Nancy was able to join us this evening, but just in case she is, Nancy, if you're on, would you like to say? Okay. Well, and last, but certainly not least, Ms. Sarah Malinowski. After 36 years of education, Sarah, my friend, you're finally retiring. And God knows, you and I have had a lot of conversations about you retiring in the last 15 years. It has been my great honor to serve with you here in Bolton for the last nine years and in our previous districts together for at least another 20. While here in Bolton, you have ensured that curriculum development meets high standards, provided embedded PD for teachers and administrators, work closely with our staff to improve teaching and learning, and always with a focus on what is right and best for kids. You are and always have been an advocate for change who has worked tirelessly to help us all become more effective educators. Our profession has had to adapt to many changes and often unfathomable challenges. Throughout your career, you have demonstrated that despite these unpredictable turns in the road, you've maintained your optimism and an unwavering belief in students, in educators, and in the process of learning. At the heart of it, you have a deep-rooted faith in the staff and the students you serve, in the practice of improving education, and the daily struggle to make it happen. I am certain that if you put in half as much of effort enjoying retirement as you have while working in education, you are really going to have an amazing time, Sarah. You've led with a kind, committed, and understanding approach in the ever-changing world of education. It is truly hard to put into words and measure the impact you have had during your time as an educator and a leader. There is a quote from Mr. Holland's Opus that I think says it best. "Look around you. There is not a life in this room that you have not touched, and each one of us is a better person because of you." It is impossible to overstate what you have meant to our team, our district, and to me, both personally and professionally, all of these years. You will be truly missed more than you will ever know. My friend, I wish you much health and happiness in your retirement and look forward to hearing about all of your wonderful adventures. Congratulations, Sarah. Would you like to say anything?
In a minute. So I didn't drink all day, Kristin, so I wouldn't be teary. I'd get dehydrated and talk. Um, thank you. What, you know, you know, we've gone, been together for so long. Thank you for those kind words, but I also want to thank my colleagues, Darryl, Christine, Jess, Beth, Jo. Because all, I mean, our, our team is amazing. Our board, thank you for your ongoing support. And I'm so grateful for this full-circle experience. You know, and as I look on the screen, Scott, I remember being back, and Mr. Biello's, Mr. Biello's seventh grade class, you know, just with Chick Ferguson there, and just, now every time I think about how fortunate I have been to have grown up in Bolton and had such an amazing life because of my foundation year, and such great people growing up and who I worked with, and we continue to grow. We have the most phenomenal teachers who are dedicated. Good luck to all of our retirees and for all of my friends who are here and we've worked together for these nine years. I'm sure I've missed somebody, our support staff. It's just been fantastic. Thank you for your kind words, your gifts. I look forward to the next steps, and I wish everyone the best. Thank you so much, Kristin.
Thank you, Sarah. And I have one more recognition. If you would just indulge me for a minute, please. Vice Chair Sue Pike is also retiring this year after 28 years of dedicated service in teaching after raising her family. And God knows, the last few years, for all of you going out on this note, you're nothing short of amazing, all of you. And Sue, same goes for you, and I wish you much health and happiness and lots of fun with the grandbabies in retirement. Congratulations. That concludes the celebration of excellence for this evening.
Well, thank you to all the departing staff, to a lot of talent and years of service to replace. I wish you all the best. Now, we move on to comments from the audience portion. Is there anyone out there in the audience who would like to make a comment?
I have something to say.
Yeah, please. I was just scanning through the screen to see if anybody was gesturing. Name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. This is Jenny Minicucci, 30, Bryan Drive in Bolton. Am I good to continue?
Yep, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Um, over the last six months, I feel like the world has been opening up with football games, concerts. Has anyone seen the Queen's Jubilee from last week? And this administration is still limiting activities with parents not being able to go to certain events, such as sports awards that was held last night. Um, I contacted the Town of Bolton Health Department, who put me onto Eastern Highlands Health District. I spoke to them. Right now, they are not operating under any restrictions. I did speak to Robert Miller at the Eastern Highlands Health District. Um, I also contacted several schools in the area regarding graduation. Glass and Dairy had their graduation. 484 graduates with a limit of 10 tickets per graduate. That's well over 5,000 people attending a function. Manchester High has 504 graduates. They are back to their normal graduation, which is four tickets per person. They do it on the football field. So counting staff, parents are the four tickets. That's over 2,000 people. Ram has a current 100, 200 students. There are no limits on their graduation tickets. And did I do Glass and Dairy? Glass and Dairy, um, I mentioned them. I believe we have 69 graduates, and we are being limited our tickets for this occasion. Graduation is more than just a parent involvement. It's a town-wide involvement with, I've been going since, for well over 20 years. Megan has been pushed, my, my daughter Megan is graduating this year, and her first graduation, she was about four, three, four months old. I pushed her up in the stroller from our home, and we have not missed her graduation since, until COVID came. So we've missed the last two graduations. It's a town event. Old staff go. Mrs. Chamberlain goes, the Smith family goes, the Moskies. All go to these events. Maybe you don't know it, but there is the whole back section. People like Ray Boyd show up at these events. The coaches are there. Um, it's a town event, and I think that limiting these functions is just something of the past at the moment. We need to move on and open up everything. The school this year has limited, or not really limited, they've canceled all the pep rallies. They, this past week or last week, they had student council, which is normally something that's in the gym with everybody involved. And this year, they did it on a Google Class Meet as, you know, individuals voting instead of a big school event. The spirit at the high school probably couldn't be lower. It's just not, I don't think, a, a fun spirit, atmosphere, where the kids are celebrating that they're leaving. They're probably celebrating leaving so that they can, you know, go out and see their friends and socialize like they always did. So I just wanted to voice my concerns about the mental health of the kids and that this limiting needs to stop.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Just at three minutes. And is there anyone else who would like to make any public comments at this time?
Sure, I will.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Ashley Thielen, 34, Picconee Drive.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so just to follow on with what Jenny was saying. So we are now that, that younger family where, you know, we have young kids in the system. I certainly don't have a graduate going through, you know, the Bolton High School graduation, but I have a lot of children that have mentors with kids that are graduating from the high school this year. Um, you know, really did want to attend with my family. I have family members who would also like to attend. You know, I certainly don't think it would be an overall, you know, huge event, you know, anything near the size of other schools that are having graduations, but, but really do respectfully ask that, you know, the board reconsider, you know, the, the limits or even having tickets. I really do believe that it should be open to the public. I believe that it can be slightly done. I have lots of confidence in the administration to be able to, you know, pull together a graduation that would be able to, you know, be directed as such. So, so yeah, and, and I'm not alone. And I know that's the case. There's many other young families out there as well. And it's all to really support, to support our graduates, to support our town. It's to bring, you know, that life back to, you know, what we once had. So appreciate there were certainly measures that were required, but, you know, you do have to reassess, pause. Eventually, there becomes a time where it's the right time to, to open it back up. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments at this time? All right. So we'll move on. Do we have any additions to the agenda this evening?
I do not have anything, no.
Um, okay, on to routine business items. The approval of minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the May 12, 2022 Special Board of Education Special Meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that. This is Chris.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments or editing on these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And who is opposed or abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay, that passes. So now looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the May 12, 2022 Board of Education Business Meeting.
So moved, Sue.
Second, Chris.
Are there any comments or editing on these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed or abstaining?
Abstain.
Scott. Okay, that was motion, that motion also carries on to Board of Education Committee Reports, Finance.
Uh, we've expended 80% of the budget, which is in line with what we did last year. And I'll just let Kristin take over from here. Talk about the ever-changing landscape of special education.
Thank you. So Jess, if we could put up the finance report, thank you. Okay, we're gonna start with transfers. We have a, a number of transfers. It's a little crazy come May and June. And we have a lot of reallocations. We had reallocation for the blind replacements. We had more at BCS that needed to be fixed than we did at Bolton High School. We had a reclass for some food for staff appreciation week. We had to reclass and revise a PO for the electrical wholesalers for an additional power pack. Reclass to cover end-of-year district supplies for the Board of Ed offices. Completion of the VHS septic system repairs, which you had approved back in May. Purchased replacement laptops and computers for administrators and admin assistants, which you would approve back in May 3rd. We needed some light bulbs, so we had a reclass there. If we could scroll down further, please. Uh, we needed oil, grease, and filters for the mowers at Bolton High School. We had a reclass for that, a reclass to cover end-of fiscal year district supplies. A reclass to cover a purchase of office supplies and to cover the VHS fan forced wall heater. A reclass to cover end-of fiscal year district kitchen supplies, increased cost of light bulbs, transfer monies to cover Teacher of the Year food costs, transfer from building admin to transportation in order to pay for an additional athletic transportation that we needed. Additional funds to cover owl purchases for Board of Ed meetings. So we have a, we will have a similar system to what the town has to cover increased cost of diesel for April, which hefty. Budget transfers to cover projected- hefty, uh, budget transfers to cover projected account shortfalls um in electricity and other supplies. A reclass to cover shipping to costs uh for repair maintenance of the Persona stage box. BCS food supplies to purchase soap to cover additional uh cellphone for the Bolton Center School principal. So I believe that that ends the transfers. So any questions for me on transfers? Okay, hearing none, we can go on to the final page. So actually, we'll stop here for a second. So we're currently um projecting full expenditure for regular education as we always do. Go to the next page, please. Uh, student support services, um, you know, as we continue to share, special education changes constantly. Uh, and um although we do anticipate um some changes in uh special education placements, they have not yet occurred. Uh, so we do anticipate that they certainly will be hitting next year's budget as uh unbudgeted items. But at this point, we are sitting with a balance in special education. So that's good news. And then um we have savings and administration support and central services. Uh, additional savings uh in salaries and wages for continuing uh positions that we have not been able to fill. Uh, as well as uh tutoring and um pieces that we did not have to use. So at this point, uh, as we are shared, we are eighty percent expended. Uh, we have committed um two hundred thousand dollars to the Board of Finance towards next year's budget. And we are looking at a revised projected balance of two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is primarily driven by the unfilled positions and therefore no um hit to um insurance there. So we will uh need a motion on the transfers, please.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the May transfers.
A second.
Thank you, Chris and Maria. Is there anyone who has any questions or comments about these transfers?
I have a question about the revised projected balance. I don't know if you want me to ask it now or after we vote on, because it's not, might not strictly be related to the transfers.
Yeah, probably after.
Okay.
Is there anyone who has any questions or comments about this motion in particular, any of the transfers?
Was the cost that was transferred that was done for the septic system, was that matching what we were budgeting? What the price we've been given?
Yes, at this point, yes. We're still, they're gonna be finishing it, Scott. Um, they're gonna start, we think, on June uh fifteenth or sixteenth. Uh, in the, so, yes, we hope so.
Okay, so, alright, so.
We had to wait for materials.
Yet.
Yes, correct, yeah.
Right.
They're gonna finish by June thirtieth?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? Uh, um, the motion carries and we'll uh ask questions now about any other parts of the finance presentation.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I am curious about the revised projected balance, which is considerably higher by, I think, several hundred thousand dollars than um the projected balance when we approved the additional fifty thousand uh to go to the Board of, Board of Finance or to go towards next year's budget. So uh, that's a pretty large discrepancy to be accounted for only by positions that would have only been filled had they been filled for a couple of months out of the year. Uh, so I'm just curious as to what's going on there.
But we were also hanging on to money for special education because at the time when we were having this discussion back on May third, we, that was, we were closing out April. And so we were hanging on to monies because we were not sure where we were going to sit with special education and whether or not we were gonna have to be transferring monies into special education to cover a shortfall. Because at that point in time, when we were looking at that, that's what we were looking at. So we have actualized savings in special ed. We've been able to actualize more savings in both salaries and benefits because now we know we're not going to be in the hole for special education. At that point in time, we were looking at a projected shortfall of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in special ed.
Okay, I, I'm probably looking, I'm looking at the March uh the budget status as of four, five, twenty twenty-two, which doesn't show a huge shortfall in special ed at that point, so.
Correct, and we haven't shown it because as I've been sharing all along, we were in flux with what we were experiencing. I have to be careful what I say here. But in terms of what was happening in PPTs, whether or not something went to due process, whether or not it went to mediation. So based on those projections that we had, we were operating on certain assumptions based on what, where we were in the context of that, those situations.
Okay, and you said it was around a hundred and twenty thousand?
So we, we were looking at potential two hundred and twenty thousand dollar shortfall.
Okay. Because I could see a hundred and twenty-two thousand, well, I don't, it doesn't really make sense to get into it because we're probably talking about different budgets, but it just is striking to me, I guess, that uh we seem to have a lot more money now than we did a month ago. And I understand that some of the things have changed in special ed, but it doesn't seem to be reflected in the uh financial statements that have been shared unless I'm looking at the wrong ones, which is entirely possible. So um, I'm happy to, you know, table this and maybe we can talk about it later. I guess the other question I would ask, is it too late to offer the Board of Finance uh more money towards next year's budget?
So it's, I asked this, this came up at a meeting. I'm not sure if you were at that meeting or not. I don't, I believe that they can look at it when they set the mill rate, but I don't believe that it can go towards um, maybe offsetting a reduction to the budget. It would offset a mill rate. Does that make sense?
Yep.
But again, and, and you know, I have cautioned the Board of Finance about this previously. I, I think we also need to, I would encourage the board to bear in mind that because I, I don't know how many umpteen years ago, uh, the, the town uh was in the, in Board of Finance in the um process of making sure money was given back each year to go towards the following year's budget. So, you know, it's, it's already proving to be a difficult budget year this year. And I am really concerned what it's going to be for the following year. And if we don't have a decent pot of money to end up giving back, because as I've shared before, we don't go on an all-out spending spree like a lot of districts do, where they simply spend all of their money. Because that was the money that was appropriated to them. That's not the process. So, you know, at some point, you know, if there, like, if there was a windfall, both boards should be spending all their money and not be um encouraged to give money back to go towards the following year's budget, but you're in that cycle. The collective we are in that cycle. And that is, once you're in that cycle, it's, it's nearly impossible to break.
Yeah, I think I understand that. Uh, although I think, I know we've had this discussion in the past. I think I've expressed support for trying to break that cycle because I think it does set up certain expectations that are probably unhealthy to the overall budgeting process.
But I, I don't disagree the point, but it's not just a Board of Ed thing to break that.
Exactly, no, that's true. Yep.
Right.
I understand. And we're not the uh, the uh biggest contributor of funds returning in most years anyway, so. Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, anyone else who wants to ask any questions about finance? Okay, we'll move on to the BHS Student Representative Reports.
Can you hear me? Alright. Uh, so the weather was very nice on the morning, and the band marched very well and the members of the chorus of the great jobs singing the national anthem. The speeches that were delivered, uh, including the Gettysburg Address were very good and it was a very moving ceremony. Yesterday, the underclassmen awards were held and quite a few awards were handed out, all well-deserved. And the final side for underclassmen.
Michael, we can't hear you all of a sudden.
Your graduating Emily will be leaving her position and I will miss her very much. Emily, it's been great seeing you in school and working with you. Uh, you're kind and hardworking. And I wish you good luck going forward. On that note, since I will no longer be a junior, Erin Tonyali will be selected as the junior representative and will be joining us moving forward.
Thank you, Michael. Welcome to Erin. Em, your last time, Keno.
Um, track has ended their season. The girls ended the regular season with the first winning record ever, which is a really big deal. And the record was oh, ten and three, and they came in seventh in the state meet. Boys track finished at number four in the NCCC and also had a very great season. There were six athletes combined on both teams that advanced to the state open. And a few of them are still practicing to get ready for the decathlon, steeple chase and hammer throw. Softball finished with a record of ten and eight and they made states. They came in seventh in the NCCC and thirteenth in the state. We had prom um last Friday at the villa and the juniors and seniors all, all went and it was a huge success. Everyone had a great time. And the seniors were done. We finished school on Monday and we're starting graduation practice um to prepare for Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on your last time. Michael and Em, feel free to stay, but you don't have to.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Um, community meeting reports. Does anyone have any community meetings to report on?
I do. Uh, the, I attended the Bolton Scholarship Funds uh June meeting at the beginning of the month. Uh, I can report that the scholarship collect, scholarship selection committee has completed their work. The board approved their selections at the June meeting. And we are very excited to uh be participating in graduation and announcing the scholarship recipients. I should also uh say a huge thank you to the townspeople and uh really everyone in Bolton and beyond who has donated this year and in past years to the Bolton Scholarship Fund. Um, I would love to share how much we are going to be giving out this year, but I'm gonna wait until graduation and let Trish announce it, but I think everyone will be very pleased with uh the amount this year, so. Exciting times for, for us in our fiftieth anniversary.
Is there anyone else? Okay, uh, now turn things over to the superintendent for the Superintendent of Schools' report.
Great, thank you very much. I'm gonna start by turning it over to Mr. Giard for a report from Bolton Center School.
And I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Safran and then I'll pick that up.
Okay.
You're like replaying a game. Alright, well, welcome, everybody. I am actually going to have um Diane Michelotti, she's on. She's going to join me because we would like to update you on some work. We've been, a lot of work we've been doing overview related to increasing students fact fluency skills here at Bolton Center School. And um Diana is the academic leader for the K-five math and she has taken such a great lead this year on this. So this year we have continued to focus on increasing students' fact fluency. During the fall of the school year, we reviewed multiple data points across grades two through eight. And based on that data, um, Diana and I planned a variety of professional development sessions during many of the early release days. Uh, those days are really valuable and we use them as, it's every minute of them. Uh, these sessions focused on increasing classroom practice in developmentally appropriate ways and learning about different assessment practices.
And when we were thinking about our assessment practices, we wanted to make sure that we had multiple ways for students to be able to demonstrate their fluency. So we know that fluency is not just about speed and of course, not just about students demonstrating um on a timed assessment. So we wanted to make sure that they were able to demonstrate in many different ways. So we've explored and implemented many ways of observing and assessing students' understanding and fluency. Um, some of those ways are observing during math games. You hear some amazing conversations from students while you're observing them during math games. Um, student interviews, talking about their strategies and how they're solving, um, and of course, open responses.
So since, and with all the work and it, we know it's a constant and it's a continual process, we're still learning. Um, Diane and I were able to attend a session in early December and we learned even more and we have a books that we're being able to share resources. So, but the teachers have been uh reporting that increased engagement in the work as a result of many of the varied practices that we're using. So students have an increased opportunity to practice through routines, games and centers. Um, we've also have now an online, we have different online games we use that are very engaging. The kids love them and they're making an impact on the students' work in the classroom, which is wonderful. Are there any questions related to this slide before we move on? Alright, well, thank you again to the board's support. We use those professional development times. Um, and we were able, with Diana's planning to spread out the learning throughout the year and we're just, we're really happy with the progress we're making and the path that we still have for us. So thank you. Alright, next I would like to share, um, we are kicking off year three of Summer Adventures in Learning and every year we grow with the program and make changes. So we will continue to have the governor's reading log and support the great idea of getting reading out there. The big goal of adventures and summer learning is to keep learning happening, keep students engaged, but doing it in a fun way over the summer. But not, you know, keeping those minds active. So we have the governor's log as well as some new summer challenges from BCS. Mrs. Sullivan and I have been working with um Ms. Herrick at the Library and Media Center and some others coming up with some great different ways for kids to think about reading and enjoying books. We also have math challenges. So the commissioner puts out a summer math challenge, which focuses on problem solving and also some different online programs to practice skills. And this year, we are putting out our new Buster's Fact Fluency Challenge because we have worked so hard this year. Our students know games. They have great ways to practice. They understand why it's important to practice their facts. It doesn't go away. So we are encouraging them and this work could not be done with the support from the PTA, who graciously donates funds to buy lots of fun prizes that the kids help pick out. And so in end of September or early October, we will have our big uh assembly and give out lots and lots of prizes. I think we gave out over seventy-five prizes last year. Students can only win one, so we're excited to see how it goes. And we'll kick it off uh a little bit tomorrow at our end of year assembly. And Mrs. Sullivan and I have the goal to get in every uh K-five room and at the middle school if we can to talk about the options that are out there. So we have options both digitally and in paper copy. Uh, we have a website that families can go to to either print out their own, but we also set up a table in the lobby with printouts for them. So we have, we just really hope that people have fun and keep learning all summer long. Any questions? All right. Well, now I believe I'm passing it back over.
Thank you.
I'll go back.
Perfect. The first bullet is kind of a celebration, could have fallen under celebration of excellence, and that's the invention convention. So the Connecticut Invention Convention 2022 State Finals Award Ceremony was held on May 15. And our eighth graders represented Bolton well. We had seven students entered into the finals and the following awards were received. Tanisha Ray and Allison Hartzog each earned the cast of the Case Connecticut Academy of Science and Engineering Award. These awards are graciously awarded to students and their inventions by CIC partner, the Connecticut Academy of Science and Engineering, and include a special invitation to the case's annual meeting. Additionally, Tanisha received the Yale Club of Hartford's David Bushnell Award, which is presented to a young student inventor whose innovation is emblematic of the genius of Yale graduate David Bushnell. Grace Osborne was awarded the honor of recognized inventor. These awards are presented by the Connecticut Invention Convention to high scoring inventors in their respective grades. Her ideas and efforts were so highly regarded that she also received an invitation to the National Invention Convention held in Dearborn, Michigan, that she attended on June 1st through the 3rd. The students did an amazing job and a big thank you to Mrs. Caruso for overseeing yet another successful year of invention convention. So it was very exciting for the students and Miss Crusoe does an amazing job with the kids. End of year events and promotion. So the end of the school year is extremely busy. In the past two weeks, students and parents attended, Mrs. Stafford and myself hosted a virtual incoming kindergarten parent night. That was last week. We also had a fifth to sixth grade transition meeting, which was virtual for parents and students. And that was last week. Our eighth grade cast scholar leaders who were recognized a few meetings ago were recognized at the Aqua Turf on Monday evening, which is always great food, rolls, cookies. You can't go wrong. Tomorrow is filled with the fifth through eighth grade virtual academic awards assembly in the morning. And then we have the PBIS schoolwide virtual assembly in the afternoon and eighth graders have their class night celebration tomorrow evening. So it is a jam packed day tomorrow. The weather looks great for Tuesday when our eighth graders take the stage at the high school for promotion. The staff and students have been practicing and everyone is excited to see our eighth graders be promoted in front of their friends and family. And I want to end this update with a big thank you to all the BCS staff, students and families for another successful year. This year was another heavy lift, as the superintendent referenced earlier, but we made it through together and I feel like we are stronger because of it. The staff is already super excited and the academic leaders have some days set to start working this summer to start planning for next year. So we're excited and already thinking about next year.
Thank you, Daryl and Jess. Appreciate that. And now I'm going to turn it over to Christine Johnson for an update from the high school.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, everyone. As you can see, we continue to partner with UConn and MCC to offer courses that may earn students college credit. This year, these courses include personal finance, drawing, calculus, statistics and environmental science. We also offer multiple AP courses to which many students, any students enroll. Next slide, Jess, if you don't mind. Thanks to the Apex Program Credit Recovery, it's a credit recovery program. We had multiple students earn back credit due to failure. We also were able to utilize this online resource for students who enrolled in our district their senior year short on required courses. Twenty seven students earn credit, allowing them to stay current with their graduating class. We will again utilize the Apex Program next year as it has proven a very valuable resource for our students. Any questions?
All right, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Christine, thank you for the update. Has the number of students using the Apex Program increased over the course of the COVID years or is it roughly as it was?
Yeah, it's hard to say because this is our first year using it. It was something that, yeah, the state actually provided this resource to all the schools and we were just lucky enough to be able to sign up and get it early on. Because I believe, I don't know for sure, but I think some schools weren't able to to get that resource. So they promised that we will have it again next year. It's free. It's really just credit recovery. We've utilized it in different, different manners. And I anticipate using it probably the same, maybe a little fewer students next year. This was just a valuable resource we could use with students who really struggled with COVID. You know, remote learning during the COVID times. So I do anticipate having less of a use for it, which I'm pleased with. Our kids are really working hard and getting that credit in class rather than having to use a credit recovery program.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes my report this evening.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. We have a second read for the grade three to five spelling program, Sunday Essentials. Do we have a motion to approve this?
No move. I'll second.
Thank you, Sue and Ria. Do anyone have any questions or comments about this?
As always, thank you very much for your support and making sure we have the resources we need.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? That passes. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget. Do we have any?
Yeah, so unfortunately, the budget referendum that was held on June 7th failed and the next budget referendum will be held on June 21st. Last night, the Board of Finance took additional action and cut the Board of Education's budget by another $41,000 for a total cut to the Bolton Board of Education of $101,000 to the budget. So I'm hopeful that the next referendum will pass.
As are we all. Thank you. Onto new business. And that is resignations.
Forming the board tonight, that BHS art teacher, Lisa Argenta, has resigned and is taking a job in a district closer to her home. And I want to thank her for her service and her great service to the Bolton Board of Educ, to the Bolton Public Schools and wish her well in her new endeavor.
Thank you. Onto twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three lunch prices.
So I'd like to remind the board that back in June of 2020, I shared with the board that we received federal funds from the USDA for our food service program. In 2020, the board raised lunch prices at both schools by 10 cents, BCS to $3 and VHS to $3.10. And the board was made aware at that time that they would need to raise prices again the following year and likely the year after. Due to the pandemic, that action was not needed because Bolton participated in the National School Lunch Program and the Seamless Summer Option, SSO, of the school lunch program during the years 2020, 21 and 21, 22, which made meals free for all students. Our current lunch prices are $3 at BCS and $3.10 at VHS, as I shared. Breakfast prices at the time were not raised in 2020 and are currently $1.75 at BCS and $2 at Bolton High School. East Con's recommendation, based on information they currently have from USDA and CSTE that we received today to cover the rising cost of goods and required increase to minimum wage is to raise breakfast prices by 25 cents at each school to $2 at BCS and $2.25 at VHS and raise lunch prices at each school to $3.25 at BCS and $3.50 at Bolton High School. This was determined by using the paid lunch equity tool that they are required to use that due to the pandemic has districts using paid meal totals from 2019, this gets very convoluted, with the agreed price increase from USDA from 21, 22, that was never applied due to meals being free for all students. Basically, we are at USDA's direction for pricing and if we do not show that we're using the tool and increasing our prices, the state can order Bolton to raise prices or Bolton will not receive USDA funding. Or we could keep the prices the same and the board of ed will need to make up the difference and thankfully, our food service system continues to be a self sustaining program, at least at this point. If we were to lose USDA funding, it would mean we would need to raise the prices of lunches to at least $5.75 a lunch. So I'm, I'm asking for a motion to raise the breakfast prices to $2 at BCS and $2.25 at Bolton High School and lunch prices to $3.25 at Bolton Center School and $3.50 at Bolton High School for the 2022, 2023 school year.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Sue.
Thank you, Chris and Sue. Does anyone have any questions I want to ask or comments to make about this?
I do have a question. So will it be kind of back to normal procedures next year, assuming that the federal government doesn't reinstate free lunch for everyone? Normal being that kids who are low income will be eligible to apply for free and reduced lunch and those, those rates will continue as before?
Yes, that is what we anticipate to happen. The feds have not stated that the seamless option is going to continue or not, but all indications are that it's not, which would mean it would revert back to the way the system was prior to the pandemic. Yes. Great question.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Or abstaining? Okay.
I'm sorry. Can I just check for purposes of the record? Was Diana voting in favor of it or against it?
I said aye.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Di.
Yeah, I think I was speaking at that time. Okay. Item three is enrollment. So after discussing with the superintendent, we decided to add this to this agenda to promote a brief discussion because at the public hearing for the budget, we had a community member who was inquiring about our enrollment and subsequently a couple of board members who mentioned it or had mentioned maybe that the community members had mentioned it and so just gonna have a very quick discussion about enrollment. I will start by saying that our enrollment comes from three places. It comes from people who live in the town of Bolton. It comes from open choice and then comes from Columbia. I guess it also comes some from teachers, but that's not something we can control. The Columbia enrollment has, we've seen go down. That has seemed to wane in part due to our lack of athletic facilities. In the past, we have reached out to Columbia and tried to align ourselves more closely in the hopes that kids would want to come to Bolton. That has kind of stalled out in COVID. I don't know if there's more opportunity there. But other than the fact that we cannot provide the same sports facilities as our competition for Columbia students. I'm not sure that there's a lot we can do with that one. The open choice students, we have seen an increase, a decrease there also partly because of COVID, partly because of the surrounding communities who have opened up seats that were not previously available. Maybe partly because of improvements in the options in Hartford and magnet schools and that type of thing. We have opened up as many seats as I mean, I don't know if as we're available to or as we can, but we've opened up this a steady number of seats, starting at younger grades and those seats have not been filled in the last couple of years. So whether or not there's an outreach opportunity there, I have no idea, but I'm not sure. That we have a lot of control over that one either. And then as far as people who live in town, I mean, I don't know how as a board, we go out and say like, hey, people, kids move to a town. I don't know how we would go about accomplishing that. So that my, is my reaction personally as to our enrollment picture, largely that we don't have much of any control over it. So, but I want to be responsive to the public. So that is why we have the discussion. I don't know. We can open it up now to anyone else who would like to comment on this or any other potential outreach, but
Yeah, I agree in large part to what, what you're saying, Andrew. I think question I would have about Columbia, I certainly am personally of the opinion that our lack, our deficient sports facilities plays an important role in that. But I do have a question about the Columbia enrollment. I know the numbers are down in number of students, but are we still getting the same percentage of students? I know because my understanding is their population has reduced. We know, I mean, if we're still asked to where we're like five years ago, forgetting 10% of their class, 15% letter.
I don't have that information right now, but I can certainly gather that information. That's a great question.
You certainly have shared with us that their, you know, their eighth grade class this year or last year was shockingly small. So even if we're getting the same percentage of people, it's going to be a reduction in students, just bodies and seats. So you know, I believe that the administration's been doing everything they can when they can to be proactive in reaching out to Columbia. But I think there are certain things that we just can't, we just can't offer. And it's unfortunate that that's the case.
One thing I want to say to that, to, to Scott's point about, you know, all of the reaching out and the various things that we do do. Another thing that has occurred is that magnet schools are now coming to Columbia to present their programs as well, as well, which was not happening previously when we would do the sort of high school night that, that Columbia hosts for their families. The Commissioner of Education earlier this year put out some very clear messaging to all schools that they are to open their doors to magnet programs that want to come in to and or agricultural schools that want to come in and promote their schools as an option.
I agree too with what Andrew said, and I think it's actually great that you you know, listed and described the various forces that we're confronted by and just, it's good to get that on the public record so that we can have something to refer to when the issue does come up again in the public. At the same time, I'm definitely, definitely concerned about, you know, what, what we do going forward. Because it's, it's hard to imagine with, you know, this year's relatively small. I mean, I think historically very small budget increases that were requested by the town and the Board of Ed. And yet we're still having trouble passing the budget and not that that is, you know, necessarily related to enrollment specifically, but I, it seems hard to imagine that if enrollments continue to decline, that the town is going to support further increases to the Board of Ed's budget. And I think there's, you know, there's some justification in, in that opposition. If we are educating. If we are educating fewer students, at some point, the costs of education should also probably go down. I realize we have a lot of infrastructure and staff, and it's all built in, and we can't make easy changes right now to economize. I mean, I think the administration already does a fantastic job with that, and the fact that we have money left over at the end of the year to give back is not a sign that we are budgeting poorly or that we're using our resources poorly. It's exactly the opposite. It's that they are watching every penny and trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible. And as Christian, Kristen mentioned earlier, we don't go on spending sprees in February and March, like many other districts do. So, I feel like we're in a, in a real bind, and that it's, it is a long-term problem that, as a board, we need to start wrestling with. And whether it's, you know, thinking about maybe bringing on, you know, I mean, we already have a firm that helps us produce videos to market the center school and the high school and to show what we're doing. Maybe we need to do something similar or more than what we are currently doing to market ourselves to choice students and to Columbia students. But I also recall that there was some discussion last year, or maybe the year before, about Andover possibly moving away, or maybe it was Columbia, doing away with their middle school. Did anything ever come of that?
No, Columbia, they did a whole study, and they heard from their townspeople, and a decision was made that they were going to remain at pre-K to aid school.
Yeah, so it definitely sounds like we're in a difficult position, but I, and I certainly don't have any answers, but I feel like we have an obligation to the town to wrestle with this. And, you know, maybe as something where we need a board retreat and brainstorm ideas, and I don't know, but I just, I just feel like if we continue going on and have continue, continuous small attrition in enrollment year after year, it's not going to, it's not going to end well.
I would like to share, we have 48 students signed up for kindergarten already. That's more than we've had in a long time.
Yeah, and I think also, overall numbers are actually higher this year than they were last year, which is a good sign.
So, how many, I can't, I don't have in front of me, this total enrollment, we're in a 750, 760 range right now for the school district, somewhere in that neighborhood. So, my point being, fewer than 700 people voted in the referendum in this town. That if every household that had a student in the district came out to vote, I think we wouldn't be having conversations like this. So, I don't know. I'm not arguing against the fact that, you know, we should be talking about enrollment, but maybe we should also be talking about messaging for the budget.
So, maybe those are two good retreat item agendas. You know, for a retreat.
And maybe it's something that we should have, I mean, I don't know if we can do a retreat with the Board of Finance, but, or maybe as something for a three-board meeting discussion, because all three, all three boards really have a vested interest in the budget passing. So, but yeah, I think Scott's absolutely right. It is, why are, why are people not voting, coming out to vote, regardless of which way they choose to vote? Simply not voting is just disheartening.
It allows for a much smaller percentage of town to control the outcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to add anything? I would say that I agree, maybe a retreat isn't, it's been quite a while since we've done one of those, pre-COVID certainly, and maybe for first thing in the fall or somewhere around there, we'll try and throw something up there. And this certainly would be a major topic of discussion for that. So, thank you, everyone, for your thoughts on this, and we'll move on to policies. We have a first read for policy 6155, has a new policy, enrollment in advanced course or program and challenging curriculum.
Yeah, so this is...
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, I'll just talk about it briefly, if that's all right. It's a new policy required by a change in state law. I think the intent of the state law was to remove some of the barriers that might have been preventing particularly historically marginalized populations from getting recommendations or in being able to enroll in advanced courses such as AB courses, or we don't do IB, or, but we do have some dual credit, dual enrollment courses. So, the, as I understand it, the practical implications for Bolton are pretty minimal because we already, we don't currently have a system that students can only get into an AP course if they meet certain academic requirements. We've, it's long allowed it by at least a minimum parent recommendate or parent request. But the policy will simply codify what's required by the state, new state law. And the main point is that academic requirements cannot be the only requirement to take an advanced course. So, I, while I had some concerns with some of the wording in part of the, part of the policy, we just, we did a policy committee to discuss it with Kristen, and she advised that, based on the attorney's feedback, we really couldn't change the language because it's very specific in the state law. Did I cover it okay, Kristen?
Spot on, Chris. Thank you. So, we'd be looking for a motion, if we could, to approve this tonight, since it goes into effect for July 1st by law.
So, I'll make the motion to approve policy 6155, enrollment in advanced course or program and challenging curriculum.
Second?
Thank you, Chris and Sue. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this policy? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Or abstaining? We have another new policy. I believe that brings us to the ever-popular future business. Do we have any?
None at this time.
That's super. So, now then, I'll be looking for a motion to go into executive session and to invite the superintendent for a discussion concerning tentative agreement with the Administrators Union, the superintendent's review, and superintendent's contract.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstaining, that passes. And we'll go into our executive session. Thank you, everyone else, for coming this evening.
Good night, thank you, everybody. Thank you.